We call the meeting, Lord. Let's pray. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this day and we thank you once again for this opportunity to come before you as working for the city of Monroe. Lord, I just pray that you give us the guidance tonight to help further the the betterment of Monroe and just let us vote with our hearts and lead us in the right direction. Ask season your name, amen. Let's record reflect all council members present. We need a approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Adcock.
Second.
Second by Ms. Scott. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Agenda passes. Now we need approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Dixon. Second by Mr. Adcock. Any discussion? Not? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. We'll move into public forum, public comments. We have one person signed up, Mr. James Paris. You'll come to the podium and you have three minutes. State your name and address.
James J. Paris, 1912 Brooklyn Court, Monroe, Georgia. And the reason I'm here, I just, I give all the documentation to your city attorney and just wondering if would y'all care to vote tonight or when would y'all vote? Or is the city going to take care of my property? Because I mean, my grass is all died and my foundation still cracked and my deck is I've bought this house, everything worked on it. Now nothing works because that floodwater ruined my foundation to everything. And it flooded my basement and put mold all in my basement.
The answer to your question is no, we're not going to vote on it tonight because we have no idea of what's going on. It has to be brought before the council.
Yes. Okay, you answer my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no one else signed up for public comments. hearing. We have a rezone on 410 East Church Street. Patrick.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is petition number thirteen.
I need to abstain from this. Any discussion?
Okay, all right.
Okay. Petition number thirteen dash zero zero two one eight. The applicant, MG Alignment LLC, has requested a change in zoning on property located at 410 East Church Street. Property has 138 feet of road frontage on Church Street, 125.9 feet of road frontage on Colley Street. is presently zoned B2 with conditions. The requested zoning classification is B2. The requested zoning will permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby property. The change of zoning will not adversely affect the existing and adjacent property. Subject property does have restricted economic use as currently zoned. The change of zoning will not cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. And the future land use plan indicates a property should be commercial slash retail. the code office and the planning zoning is to approve with recommendations. So basically, rather than just give a straight B2 zoning, to just modify the conditions that are on the B2 zoning now, those would be to include special events, catering, and overnight lodging.
Okay. Property owner here? Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for your patience while we work through the technical difficulty. I just realized that everybody's looking at me instead of my presentation, so
If you'll state your name for the record.
Yes, I'm sorry. Off track. Good evening. My name is Tom Mayfield. I'm here on behalf of the MG Alignment LLC. I'm here with my wife Kimberly Mayfield. We're both members of the LLC. There's two members who are not able to attend tonight because of a family emergency. The presentation I have will just take a few minutes. If you would, if you can, from where you are, look at the overview. I just want to give you a real quick overview of the project. Most of you are familiar with 410 East Church Street, but I'll, for the benefit of everybody here, I'll go through that very quickly, tell you a little bit about our redevelopment plan, and then state the case for our request. Original construction, 1890, renovated in 1997. This property is within the historic district of the city of Monroe, currently zoned B2 with conditions, 6,700 square feet, off-site parking. This is a survey. Couple things that point out real quickly on this, we're at the corner of Church and Colley. The eastern boundary of our property is zoned B2. The southern boundary of our property is zoned B2, no conditions. That's an important part of our request. Next page. This shows a site plan, preliminary site plan of the project illustrating the off-site, off-street parking. Next, this is an excerpt of the Monroe Historic District map showing the location of our property. Right there at the corner of Colley and Church Street in the historic district. Next is a zoning map. You see the flag there highlighting our property as B2 with conditions in the kind of pink-red color. Immediately adjacent to our property, you see that property on Bell Street, zoned B2. The property behind us, southern boundary, B2 zoning. The block east toward, I'm sorry, the block west toward downtown where Millage is, you see beyond that is commercial. Just a tax map to give you a real quick aerial view, just to refamiliarize yourself with this neighborhood. Even though all those properties there between Madison and Millage are currently zoned commercial, they look very much like residential properties. That's our property, Colley and Church Street. This is the redevelopment plan, proposed second floor to convert the upstairs into four two-room guest suites. And the third floor will be renovated and converted into an executive guest suite, including common area for guests. There are four important things I want to highlight from the zoning request. When we met with the planning commission last month, we understood these were four important criteria that were included as part of the recommendation from the planning commission. And I'd like to just go through these four points with a couple of illustrations very First of all, the change that we're making is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby property. On the left is the frontage on Church Street looking toward downtown. On the right is just the opposite direction looking east. It's pretty obvious, this used to be a residential area. The blue house on the right is zoned for single-family residents. If you go one block west toward downtown, on the left you see the sign, that's Millage. Just beyond that sign, so one block away from our property is where the commercial district begins on Church Street. If you go one more block to Madison. This is Madison. Turn around the other way, looking east again, our property would just be there, just below the horizon there. That's all, looks like residential, but that is all zoned commercial. So we feel like our property does fit in and is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby property. As I pointed out before from the survey, our property does, is bounded by two properties that are also zoned B2. On the left is the eastern borderline of our property. That is zoned for commercial use. I forgot the name of that cross street. That is, that is Bell. Thank you. So it's a commercial property, shares our, shares our eastern boundary on Bell Street. On the right is the commercial property on Davis Street in Colley, also zoned for commercial. It's currently used as residential, for residential use. Next page. The requested zoning change will not cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets. This is the off-site parking that we have as part of our property. And that's the survey, so you can see where we have parking for approximately 40 cars on, onsite. And then the next thing is the future land use plan indicates that the property should be commercial and retail. I just wanted to highlight here, these are two commercial properties that are very close proximity to 410 East Church Street, except that they are not within the historic district. On the left is a convenience store in the 800 block of Church Street. It's four tenths of a mile from our property. But that property is not part of the historic district, even though it is a commercial use and even though it is very close proximity. On the right is a commercial property at the intersection of Madison and somebody knows where that is. I'm sorry. It starts with a B. Somebody said it. Bolt Springs. Yes, I'm sorry. Six tenths of a mile from the subject property, the intersection of Bolt Springs and North Madison. That is a commercial property. It is not within the historic district. So obviously, there are examples of commercial properties that look very different than our property, but they are not governed by the protective ordinances of the Monroe Historic District. So just to reiterate, the requested change that we've made, it is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby property. We do not believe that will adversely affect the existing adjacent property. We do not believe that this change will be excessive or burdensome on infrastructure of the city. And we do believe that it is in alignment with the land use plan for commercial and retail, and I've added in parentheses, it is part of the Monroe Historic District. So there is an extra layer of protection, an extra layer of requirements that we will have to comply with, with the B2 zoning because we are part of the Monroe Historic District. So thank you for your time. I would like any questions.
Okay. Any questions?
What's your projected date to be ready to open?
We've been waiting for this final approval. We think we can be open in November. We've hired an architect, we're almost done with the plans. We're in the process right now of interviewing general contractors and we'll be able to get the redevelopment started. But we don't expect any extended period of time.
Any more questions? Thank you. If anybody comes up against, you'll have a three-minute rezone. Does anybody else want to speak in favor of this rezone? Is there anybody out there that wants to speak against this rezone? Okay, hearing none. We'll close this part of the public hearing and bring it forward to the council.
Mayor, can I ask again if Patrick would read what the conditions
Yeah, the recommendation was to rezone to B2 with conditions. The conditions being that the only business uses they would be able to use to fit their business model would be special events, catering, and overnight lodging.
Need motion?
To approve.
Motion by Ms. Scott.
Second.
Second by Mr. Richardson. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Number B is approval of the 2013 Millage rate.
Can I add one more? Can I ask you a question?
Okay, go ahead, right, please.
I didn't understand what the motion, I heard that it was, motion was made. I don't know what the motion was.
We approve the rezone on 410. Yes, with the conditions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear the with conditions.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Approval of 2013 Millage rate. Matthew, you want to speak on that?
Yes, sir. Mayor, this is, we're just asking for your approval to adopt the rollback rate as presented. I'm trying to pull that attachment up as we speak. Which for 2013 will be 8.470.
Is this a hearing or a real open motion? This is a open public hearing right now. Does anybody like to speak in favor of this Millage rate? Hearing none. Would anybody like to speak against this Millage rate? Okay, we'll close that part of the public hearing and bring it forward to the council.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we set the Millage rate at 8.231 or same as 2012.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Let's have a show of hands, eyes. All the eyes raise their hand. Mr. Richardson, Mr. Bradley, Mr. Purvis, and Ms. Mountain. All against? Ms. Scott, Ms. Dixon, Mr. Adcock, and Mr. Lutt. So it's a tie vote, so I get to break the tie. And I vote that we get the rollback rate to 8.47. Okay?
You have to vote. You either got to vote for or against.
I vote for the rollback rate. Against the motion? Sorry, I'm sorry.
May I ask a question?
Yes, you can ask a question.
Does that mean that taxes will be raised against the citizens of Monroe?
The taxes will go with the rollback rate, which the county recommends that we go with. So yes, there probably will be a slight increase. That's what the county recommends the city goes with, to keep our general, general fund without falling behind. So I don't see any need in causing some burdensome on citizens a couple of years from now when we're trying to find extra money to fund our general fund.
I'd like to know, I'd like to have public record that I'm voting against raising taxes on the city of Monroe.
It's only public. It's only public. That's why I had a show of hands. Okay, I vote against it, so it fails four to five. Okay? We'll move into new business.
If that holds well, you'll need a new motion. You can entertain a new motion.
All right, we entertain a new motion.
We adopt the rollback rate, vote 8.47.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second. Do I vote on this?
Well, personally, a couple of persons can call.
All in favor.
You have discussion, correct?
All right, discussion.
I understand, I was opposed to this motion, I want to speak to it. If I look at it from 2008 through 2012, we raised the Millage rate 25 percent. We have a 25 percent increase from 2008 to 2012. And I understand that doesn't necessarily mean we increase, we definitely not increased the amount of taxes coming in. We all understand the economic situation. I just feel like it's a time for us to take a stand, not to raise the Millage rate, but rather to start actively, creatively looking for new sources of revenue and ways to improve the economic situation of Monroe. And I would hope that we can do that, particularly through the 2014 budget process and that we need to be started with, creative ways to lead Monroe into ways of increasing revenue rather than raising taxes. So that's the reason I'm opposed to this particular motion.
Okay, any more discussion?
I just, I would like to know what that you have in mind as a resource, other resources.
Well, if you notice the industry that's left during the period of time is closed and the retail business is also. In mind would be how can we as a city lead the, a city government, lead the city through the council, the mayor, the city administration, to find creative ways to get new retail businesses to come in so we can get additional revenue from that. We don't need to get existing revenue from existing taxpayers, we need new taxpayers. We need new people coming in, there'll be new taxpayers that'll increase the revenue.
Yeah, but we can't remain stagnant while we wait for some company to move in.
And I don't think we can wait for companies to move in. I think we have to be proactive to go after those companies to come in rather than sit back and wait for the companies. That's my only position.
I think that your point's well made, but it is a minor increase considering that the city has weathered the storm since 2008, been able to provide all of the services that it has, cut expenses, cut employees, and still need this to help. If there were a dollar of that
Against the motion, sorry, I'm sorry.
May I ask a question?
Yes, you can ask a question.
Does that mean that taxes will be raised against the citizens of Monroe?
The taxes will go with the rollback rate, which the county recommends that we go with, so yes, there probably will be a slight increase. That's what the county recommends the city goes with, to keep our general fund without falling behind. So I don't see any need in causing some burdensome on citizens a couple of years from now when we're trying to find extra money to fund our general fund.
I'd like to have public record that I'm voting against raising taxes on the city of Monroe.
It's on the public.
Okay.
It's on the public. That's why I had a show of hands. Okay, I vote against it, so it fails four to five. We'll move into new business.
If that holds, we'll have a new motion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You can entertain a new motion.
All right, we entertain a new motion.
We adopt the rollback rate, 8.47.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second. Do I vote on this?
Well, personally, you can call.
All in favor.
You have discussion, correct?
All right, discussion.
I understand, I was opposed to this motion, I'm going to speak to it. If I look at it from 2008 through 2012, we've raised the millage rate 25 percent. We have a 25 percent increase from 2008 to 2012. And I understand that doesn't necessarily mean we increased, we definitely not increased the amount of taxes coming in. We all understand the economic situation. I just feel like it's time for us to take a stand, not to raise the millage rate, but rather to start actively, creatively looking for new sources of revenue and ways to improve the economic situation of Monroe. And I would hope that we can do that, particularly through the 2014 budget process, and that we need to be started with that, creative ways to lead Monroe into ways of increasing revenue rather than raising taxes. So that's the reason I'm opposed to this particular motion.
Okay, any more discussion?
I just, I would like to know what you have in mind as a resource, other resources.
Well, if you notice the industry that's left during the period of time is closed, and retail businesses also. In mind would be, how can we, as a city, lead the, a city government, lead the city through the council, the mayor, the city administration, to find creative ways to get new retail businesses to come in so we can get additional revenue from that. We don't need to get existing revenue from existing taxpayers, we need new taxpayers. We need new people coming in, there'll be new taxpayers that'll increase the revenue.
Yeah, but we can't remain stagnant while we wait for some company to move in.
And I don't think we can wait for companies to move in.
Exactly.
I think we have to be proactive to go after those companies to come in, rather than sit back and wait for the companies. That's my only position.
I think that, your point's well made, but it is a minor increase, considering that the city has weathered the storm since 2008, been able to provide all of the services that it has, cut expenses, cut employees, and still need this to help. If there were a dollar of excess, it is definitely needed in our general fund to make up for the weathering, this storm, which I hope is over. I would argue the fact that maybe everybody's taxes are not, it is not a blanket raise in taxes. If, because it is based on the millage rate, if the property values, which there again it's based on, were to go down, those tax bills would go down. And, so I mean, that's why, I mean, I have to support it from a fiscal point of view, even though your point is well made. But we need to do that regardless of what this millage rate is, because it is setting it to just barely come out, even, if even.
Got you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Aye.
Okay, still four to four.
Can you give a show of hands?
Show of hands for all who voted aye. Mr. Little, Mr. Adcock, Ms. Scott, and Ms. Dixon, all voted against. Mr. Richardson, Mr. Bradley, Ms. Malcolm, and Mr. Purvis.
You have time there, time rights to you.
Okay, I vote for the... Okay. Now we'll move on to new business, application beer and wine sales Monroe food mart. Is there a thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As the property owner, business owner here, okay? Any questions, councilman? Not, we need a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion by Ms. Scott.
Second.
Second by Mr. Purvis. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. We have, item number two is application for beer and wine package sales Chestnut Cupboard.
Yes, sir, that's the order also.
Okay, is a store owner here? Okay. Any questions from council? Not, we need a motion.
Move to approve.
Ms. Scott.
Second.
Second by Mr. Adcock. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Item number three, we have an appointment for the planning commission. The name of Michael Reese. Michael's the owner and president of the MG Group Incorporated, is a real estate investment and property management company. He's worked in law enforcement for 22 years. With his wife, he co-founded Shepherd's House, which is focused on delivering programs and support to at-risk boys aged 11 to 17. He's a member of the Walton County Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Reese is present.
And Mr. Reese is present, out in the audience. Thank you, sir. I'd like to see him go on this.
I move approval of Mr. Reese's appointment to me.
Motion by Mr. Bradley. Second by Mr. Adcock. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Item number four, the approval of CDBG 2013 engineering services agreement.
Mayor, this is the agreement we're asking you to approve with Hofstadter and Associates, our city water and sewer engineers. And this goes along with our 2013 CDBG project, which Rodney discussed last meeting, and just asking you to approve this in the amount, and you'll see it on the, one of the attachments of 78,000, zero, sixty-seven, seventy-four cents.
Our office has reviewed the contract, and it's in order, Mayor.
We need a motion for this CDBG.
Move to approve.
Scott.
Second.
Second by Ms. Malcolm. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Item number five is a second reading of the political activity ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Monroe, Georgia with respect to political activity of appointed officials and for other purposes. The mayor and council of the city of Monroe, Georgia hereby ordain as follows. Article one, amend chapter two, administration, article one in general, by deleting said section in its entirety and substituting the following in lieu thereof. Section two dash seven, political activity. Any person appointed by the mayor and council to a paid or volunteer board, commission, or authority shall neither hold nor seek an elective office in the city government. Paid appointees shall not solicit any contributions or assessments or services, nor publicly endorse any candidate for any city elective office, other than to vote and privately express opinions. The mayor and council may establish additional boards as necessary. City boards include: planning commission, historic preservation commission, downtown development authority, convention and visitors bureau, housing authority, Carver High Auditorium, Monroe Tree Board, library board. Section two dash eight, enforcement. Any board, any appointed board member of the city may be subject to immediate removal from position for violation of section two dash seven. Article two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are repealed. Article three, this ordinance shall take effect upon its adoption by the mayor and the council of the city of Monroe, Georgia. This constitutes a second reading, Mayor.
Thank you. We have any discussion on this before we vote?
I just like this statement. I've spent a lot of time thinking about this, and the way it is presented and written is, it's difficult for me to support that. I feel like, from a paid perspective, this could apply, but for volunteer board, I just do not feel that it is in our best interest to dictate it in such a manner.
You know, this is to replace the ordinance that's already there that says volunteers cannot even express, can they support anyone? This permits volunteers to support candidates. This replaces the ordinance that prevents volunteers from supporting candidates. This is to give, give back volunteer board members rights to, you know, voice their opinion on political candidates.
Okay.
That's the purpose of this one, is to replace...
To delete, okay.
Delete the other one.
I'd just like to say, the way our current ordinance reads, if you're... If you're appointed to a volunteer position, on the DDA, for instance, you're not allowed to even put a sign under your yard to support of any candidate. I just don't think that's right, so I support it.
Any more discussion? I do want to make a couple of points before we vote. Last month, it was stated that this is against the First Amendment rights of people. It's not against the First Amendment rights, this ordinance we have that stands right now. It's my opinion that people where they're appointed, non-paid or paid, they're doing the work for the city. I don't think they need to be involved in political aspects. It's not preventing them from vote. We had a situation four years ago. We had several volunteer people out campaigning for different people, and it presents a problem. It does not make our decisions here go smoothly, especially when you got people out campaigning against you that's supposed to be doing the work for the city. That's why, two years ago, we actually voted for this ordinance, and it was passed unanimously. I still believe that if you're doing the work for the city, you don't need to be involved in the politics, whether you're voting, you're campaigning for a person that's sitting on the council or the mayor, or somebody that's running against the councilperson or the mayor. Your job is to do the work for the city, and if you're so inclined to campaign and feel that strongly, then you should have, you should You were appointed by, by this body to do the work that you want to do. It's not causing you any, it's not preventing you from doing anything if that's what you want to do. And I just, I feel like that you're going to open a door that may not affect this election, but may affect elections down the road. And that's my opinion.
And I would, if I could respectfully disagree with the mayor, that, because I think that people that we have serving in volunteer positions are people that are in great love of the city of Monroe, or they wouldn't be volunteering all their time and...
And that's not stopping them from loving Monroe.
And because they are serving, they also are knowledgeable about what's going on and what needs to be done, and so therefore they should, on a volunteer basis, I'm not talking about paid people, lame stretch, but volunteers doing this, I believe should have the right to support the candidate of their choice, you know, for elected office.
Any more discussion? If not, we need a motion.
I move this to be approved.
Do we have a motion? We have a second by Mr. Richardson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right.
Call for the vote.
Need to call for the vote. All four? All against? Okay, passes. We have approval of the Social Circle gas line agreement.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I'll take that, and Rodney's going to chime in as well. Back in 95, and you'll see the attachment on your agenda, there was an agreement between the city of Social Circle and the city of Monroe, to allow Social Circle to attach on to our gas line at our Transco tap, which is North Broad Street here, which allowed, and which allowed Social Circle to run a gas line to the city of Social Circle, and basically create their gas system. They came to us, as the agreement states, in 95. We had some excess gas, and thought we could be a team player with them and help them get started in the, in the Last month, they had approached us and, and said that now they are able to purchase a tap on the Transco system, and that they are proposing to come off of our tap, and so they'll basically be on their own and not need to be tapped on our system any longer. So what we really have to work out is the agreement for the line that they have running through our area to Social Circle. We currently have, Rodney, you correct me if I'm wrong, 148, 150 customers off that line. And basically, what I'm asking for, excuse me, is the approval to send them a letter of a proposal on how we plan on helping them maintain their gas line. And the proposal from staff and myself is to share with them any maintenance that All the way to HDAetha Road, there's a, there's a meter at HDAetha and 138, where basically our portion of the line would stop, and we would be responsible for any kind of maintenance, cathodic protection, order some others.
Leaked surveys.
Leaked surveys, really any general maintenance to our portion of their line, if you will. So that's our first thought. Don't know if Social Circle's going to come back and... And make a counter offer on what they think they deserve or whatnot, but that's just our initial thoughts. Rodney, do you have anything to add?
No, I think you've covered it all.
As far as the agreement goes, it shows that we're currently charging them .3 cents per decatherm, and basically, we would flop that. They would charge us .3 cents per decatherm for the amount of gas that we take to serve our customers that are on that section of Our city attorneys are drawing up an agreement as we speak, but I'm just, I'm just wanting to send a letter to them of our offer for what we want to do to help maintain this. And I'll take any questions, and Rodney can answer any questions as well.
We'll turn this around, and they'll just act as a carrier for our customers that's on the line.
That's correct.
Right.
And, and also currently, I should mention this. To we, on the countywide safety plan that's approved by the Public Service Commission, it's seen as a joint protection area.
Joint response, yeah.
Joint, yeah. And so if anything happens, both parties will be called out to, you know, investigate anything that goes wrong with the line or whatnot, so. But it is our area, and it is our gas service area.
So basically, in dollars, what are you talking about per year?
Oh, based off the last 12 months, we would pay them $434.44 to transport that gas for us, to our customers.
Plus any general maintenance.
That's for the year.
And that, and this would be good, I mean, if they agree 20 years out. And that, and this would be good, I mean, if they agree 20 years out.
Yeah, well, that was the old agreement, and then can I speak to what the idea
It would be, it would be this council's pleasure, generally, you know, you take agreements like this, it would either be 20-year, 30-year, 50-year agreements, cannot exceed 50 years. So the history is a 20-year agreement, so by default, that's probably what we would go with. But really, that's just a term that parties, both this city and the good city of Social Circle, can agree upon.
But it would be specified that that 20, if it was agreed upon, that 20 years would begin from the date of the new agreement, not pick up
Correct.
Not
Correct. The existing agreement expires in 2015. So in essence, this is sort of an early redo of the agreement that's already in place. It's just the reality of the nature that and S is going to swap positions.
We would also include in the agreement to, there would be no limit of capacity that, I mean, obviously, as you ride down 138, there's plenty of potential development that we would be able to utilize there for gas services, so, you know, we don't want, that'd be all spelled out in the, in the agreement once we get everything finalized with Social Circle.
I make motion that you're authorized to propose this. As outlined
I have a motion by Mr. Little.
Second.
Taken by Mr. Purvis. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. All right, with no other business, we need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Adcock, second by Ms. Scott, all in favor? Meeting adjourned.